Hey, Tia.
Hey, how are you?
Evening. Ryan's still walking on. Heidi, you all said Heidi?
I am.
Great. Evening.
It's working.
Yeah. Miracles do happen. You up? Good. Excellent.
Hi, Ryan.
Who's relaxing on the couch? Heidi?
Oh, that's my daughter.
She looks awful cozy.
We can light the fire if you want.
She looks very comfy.
Or we could get some screaming kids in here. There's a couple in the basement.
Oh, we're good.
Screaming, but you know. Sorry, I didn't know you were back there, Jess.
The joys of Zoom, Heidi.
Could have been worse, right?
That's.
It could have been much worse.
So, Ryan, have any of your windmills ever frozen up like they did down in Texas?
From time to time, I mean, the blades, definitely the blades can actually ice up. But I mean, the big thing with those turbines down in Texas, I mean, they they have fans and stuff like that to keep them cool. And they're not designed for the weather that they're experiencing. So.
Right.
It's just like our ours, if we had a bunch of hundred and something degree days, ours wouldn't run either. So.
Right. I'm likely for us, that's, you know, usually a one to two day event. That's it.
Exactly.
Kelly's here. That's good. Hello, Kelly.
Is muted.
Hey, Kelly.
Howdy ho.
Evening.
Dogs are outside. Usually I keep myself muted because my little dog Annabelle doesn't understand computer people or TV sometimes. So.
Okay, well, if if you need to speak, Kelly, just raise your hand so I know you because you can't unmute yourself. Okay?
Hard bird. I don't think I'm supposed to talk anyways.
All right.
Which is very hard for me if any of you actually know me in human form.
Thanks for coming, Heidi.
I'm gonna go back on mute now.
All right, Kelly. Thank you. Oh. What happened, Tia?
You.
You got frisky dogs in your house today?
Yes. Walking in the door, that's why.
Yeah. They will do. There he is. The one applying board members over in Greenland had just gotten amassed a few months back.
Oh, boy.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, my God. He put he held him up a few months ago. I mean, there's a puppy. He was the size of your, you know, twice the size of your dog. Tia, and and then he got COVID and I hadn't seen him in like six weeks. And he showed me this dog the other day. He's like twice the size. He's like a pound a day.
Wow.
Unbelievable.
I wouldn't want to see that. Dog food bill.
Right? Walk out the door with like five bags, the forty pounders, you know, at sixty bucks a whack. Just waiting for a few more members here, Fran.
Forget about it.
Talked to talked to Dean this afternoon, so. We need his heaven will be good. Speak of the devil. Tia, I'm allowing you to co-host just in case.
Okay.
You never know. All right, let me unmute.
I have a flag ready too.
Yeah. Evening, Dean.
Good evening. Can anybody hear me?
Ten, ten-four.
Well, that's too bad.
I can mute you if you want.
Well, only if necessary.
Try to behave yourself, Dean.
Well.
That's.
Yeah, I know. I've known him a long time.
Say no more.
Rough week, Heidi?
No.
No?
No, surviving.
Still gotta turn my volume up. I can't hear anybody. Maybe that'll be better.
There you go.
Bill will not be with us.
Don't bother. Have you heard from about well, Scott?
I have not heard. I have not heard from Scott, which usually means he's good to go.
Okay, so let me send him a message right now and see if he can.
So we get Dan. Dan said he wasn't going to be able to make it tonight, so he won't be here. Yeah.
So now we're two down.
Keith should be calling in, I would hope.
Okay.
So really, we're only waiting on Scott and.
Yeah.
There he is. Just unmute. Keith usually calls in. Yeah. That's a nice note from Alyssa Goss, Dean, to you. Hello, Dean. You see that?
Yes, I think I saw that flash by.
Yeah, if you go down below and press chat, it'll pop up. It's a note to you.
Did you?
It's like the whole gang is up on Liberty Hill. You gotta watch them Blanchards. I hope I'm not in a crosshairs. Well, Uncle John isn't there.
Doesn't know you're in the background. Dean, I have a couch surfer.
You do?
Yeah. She's over there.
I see that.
You've known her since she was a little whippersnapper.
Yes.
Little whippersnapper.
She used to sit in my recliner whenever I, if I didn't, if I wasn't home to climb it, should sit in my recliner and eat tuna sandwiches and leave crumbs like I never did. And it smells like.
And watch Wheel of Fortune, she says.
Yeah, stinky old lagers, yeah. She loved it.
Well, at least she didn't leave the sandwich because that would really be rather bad. Something like old tuna fish sitting in a cup for a few days.
You couldn't identify. That was the first place I landed when I got home, so you wouldn't have identified any of the smells. And if she wasn't in it and I wasn't in it, the dog was in it. So.
Well, there you go.
And I don't think we live much better now, but we're here.
All right, because Dean, your mom knew me since I was a little whippersnapper. So.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Goes way back.
A bunch of whippersnappers around here.
Yeah, yeah. You wouldn't know it from Dean, but he had the sweetest mother.
Yeah, that was my mom. Boy, I tell you, I can still remember the look on her face when I got caught with my first pack of cigarettes. I thought I thought I was gonna be laser beamed. I was gonna have two holes straightly through me.
All mothers have laser beams.
Oh, I know.
All right, it's six thirty there, Dino.
It is?
It is, sir.
Well, let's see if we can bring this to order. Can Scott, whenever he chimes in, if he does, what does that mean for our numbers?
I asked to unmute him. Scott, where are you?
Yeah, okay.
There you are.
It's unmuted.
Good.
Okay.
Scott is there. Right. Evening.
So Bill is not here.
He's excused.
He's excused. Well, we just let him go. That's all. Has Dan attended yet?
Dan is out of town.
Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to get my checklist here correct. So when we ask for a vote.
So we have Heidi, Ryan, Scott. And you.
And Tia.
And Tia.
Is a voting member. So we've got enough, huh?
Absolutely.
To do as we please. Could we start with the pledge? Could someone put up something?
I believe Tia is all over.
Is all over.
That's it.
I pledge allegiance
Allegiance.
to the flag
Flag.
United States of America.
American.
Into the Republic which stands
Stands.
one nation
One nation
under God.
God.
Individual.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Well, I hope.
Tia.
I hope everybody enjoyed the weather today, that's for sure. Has everyone had time to review the minutes from the previous meeting? Actually, we'd have to deal with two, wouldn't we, Mark?
Yeah, we, I think I sent out the meeting, the.
I believe so, yes.
The two second meeting we had a few weeks ago. And then we have the July, January thirteenth.
Yes.
So why don't we do the February tenth minutes first.
Make a motion to approve.
A second there.
Those in favor, Tia?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I would say yes also. Their one sentence.
And then the January thirteenth, which are a little bit more robust.
Yes, they are, but I could see. I could not see anything that would hold up us accepting them as written. How about anybody else? And everybody else have time to read them over?
They look fine.
Yep, look fine.
Well, I would make a motion to accept them as written.
A second.
Those in favor, Tia?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I would say yes. Moving along, is there any projects of regional impact?
Mark. Well, it's the project before us is considered a project of regional impact under our state statute. And every community within twenty miles was notified of the hearing. But nothing else.
Nothing else. Now, let's go into the public hearing. PBK PB case two thousand twenty-one, semicolon, zero, one, proposed site plan application for the construction of a hundred and fifty foot monopole wireless communication tower and accessory equipment. Seven ninety-six Liberty Hill Road owner Tom Patnod, two thousand and twelve revocable trust and K Goss revocable trust. The applicant is Relax Tower Assets LLC, map one dash sixty-five zone rural residential. And it was tabled on January fifth, the January thirteenth, if you're.
Right. And the principal purpose of the tabling, and I'll unmute the applicant's attorney was to undertake a visual impact analysis. If you recall, Mr. Chairman, we discussed various viewpoints around the community that you asked the applicant to take photos from. They did a balloon test that was advertised. The weather was fairly good that day. And this is the various points of view that the applicant did on their own, or we we came up with a number of different suggestions. And a list was provided to them. So I guess I'll turn it over to Fran if you want to summarize these. And I'll just flip through the sheets as we go, Fran.
Yes, again, my name is Francis Parisi, representing the applicant Vertex Tower Assets LLC. We're here tonight seeking a site plan approval for a wireless telecommunications facility. As the planner noted, we were before you back in January and you guys had requested a visibility demonstration, which we did. We put a balloon up in the air to the height of the facility and drove around. And just so you know, we engage consultants to do this. We don't do this ourselves. Although I was in town, I like to be able to talk intelligently about it. And we, these, what you're seeing on the screen in front of us are the results of visibility demonstration. These are all the roads that the consultants drove and took pictures. Generally, they go out a mile. In this case, they went out two miles. And there were a couple vantage points that the the town had asked that were like three and four miles away. I personally drove those myself. I have several pictures if you want to see them, but it was just so far away, there was no visibility to the site. I'd like to say that the site was invisible, but there's no such thing as involved. And, you know, there was some minimal visibility along the Route eighteen corridor. Right at the, what's the next town? Hillsboro. Henneker line, as you're looking southbound towards Henneker. So there was some visibility right there. And we can look at the photographs. All the other vantage points that we took all along Route eighteen. Certainly Liberty Hill Road and the closest to Butters. And if you've ever driven up Liberty Hill Road, it's a very heavily forested road. You're really in kind of a tunnel as you drive up the road. And even at the top of the hill at the subject property, you're still, you know, you can drive to about right here. And you're still you know, well over a thousand feet away from the property. And the way the topography is, you really had no visibility. So I can't, I don't, I can't control this, but and and the numbers here correspond to the photo vantage points. So I guess, and unfortunately, they do it by distance, not by logic. So they started photograph number one and then photograph two. And the the photos are all geo coded as well. That's why they do it distance wise and not logically, like they don't go down a road and go one, two, three. So as you can see from Bradford Road, pretty much the closest vantage point, there's no visibility. You're looking at a at a wall of trees here. And as you can note, we did this in the winter time when there was no leaves on the trees. There'll be no visibility to the site. And Mark, why don't you just scroll through them? You know, this is again, farther.
On each photo, on the bottom left is is the number and then where the location was. And and if anyone has any questions, just let us know. But I'm just gonna scroll.
And more specifically, and more specifically, it's also the distance. You look in the middle of the bottom, there's the distance to the site. So you see.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, it's it's, these are all done with cameras that have geo coding in them. So the coordinates are accurate. Sometimes this, even the street names don't line up because it's done based on coordinates. But, you know, it's it's very precise. This is on Liberty Hill Road. This is probably the the closest vantage point from Liberty Hill Road. And, you know, we're going to be back. You can see the house in the background. We're going to be a thousand feet plus back behind that facility. It slopes down, it slopes up. You really just don't get the advantage to see this at all.
For clarity to the public, you kept referring to Route eighteen. Are you speaking of two oh two and nine?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant to say two oh two, but yes.
Two oh nine, right.
And yeah, this, like I said, the only vantage point that we could see it was, you can't see my pointer, photo location ten, which is, I believe that's Route nine, going up towards Hillsboro.
Right.
Scott and I were on his deck. Basically looking right across the valley. I could not pick it up with even my binoculars. There's enough texture to the hill and enough shapes involved in the hill that you, you know, we could not find the balloon and it was up at that point. And.
I will tell you, I took advantage of my being in Henneker to go skiing at Pat's Peak that day. And I drove around for a couple hours and then I went up the chairlift and I had, and and I thought you were going to be able to see it from the chairlift. You know, if you turned around, looked back over your shoulder, and I wasn't even able to see it for that same reason.
Pretend the one you're. Yeah. So if you actually zoom in on that photo, there's a little tiny speck.
And if you go to the next photo.
Right here.
Yeah, if you go to the next photo, that's what it's gonna look like. You see the little, you know, that it's really just above the trees. Now you're zooming in better than your eye. You know, so it's it's visible, but you know, I'm not sure the scale here, but you're well over a mile away at this point. It just really loses visibility. You're a mile and a tenth.
The relationship of the balloon size to what the tower will actually be.
The the balloon was about four feet in diameter. This is scaled so that the tower is about twelve feet. The the top platform is a triangle and the face of the triangle is about twelve feet across. So this is scaled very appropriately to based on the balloon. You can barely see the balloon in the photograph.
Right there.
And that's a four foot balloon. So the 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 tower will be bigger than the balloon. But as you can see, it's it's really not that prominent in the horizon. And that, you know, we can look at all the other photographs, really, all the other vantage points. This is farther down or on Pine Hill Road. Ridge Top Bradford, you know, like all these roads, there was just no visibility. Just given the topography, given the the tree canopy, you just couldn't see the one. To be honest, I was kind of surprised. I thought there would have been some vantage points up on Ridge Top, for example, but you can see, no one's really looking in that direction, even, you know, as you go farther down Liberty Hill Road and then and then Davidson Road, you just don't have any perspective to see it.
The balloon obviously was as high as the tower will be.
Yeah, to be honest, it's actually taller than the tower. We learned a couple years ago that balloons shrink and expand in temperature. And the string was the hundred and fifty feet of the tower. The balloon is actually a little bit taller. So I can certify that the string was a hundred and fifty feet. I can measure the string. And so it's actually up a little taller than the, but then they, the, when they do the photo simulations, they take that into account.
Did any, did any other board members observe this from any locations? I take that as a no. I think we can conclude that visually, this tower will have just about a hundred percent no impact on the visibility anywhere. You know, in town, of course, one thing I think we've got to take a perspective of is the southern end of town that's down that ridge line. You know, there's really not that that open a spot to visualize it. Bear Hill has started to open up towards Hillsboro. Some of their view of the valley by taking a lot of trees down and everything else, but you get from you know, Patterson right on through. Crane is more or less. Scott is the only one that's really got a point of view from it. The peak has a little bit, but there's nothing out that way. And then you go from the peak down the ridge line all the way to Heidi. And there's really nobody up on that visible ridge line. You know, I just, I just don't think it's going to be that visible, certainly with a naked eye. I mean, I couldn't even find the balloon with my binoculars. And it's a good set. But it was cold. The wind was blowing. Scott and I were talking. So I mean, then I was petting his dog. That ended it. Any other comment from board members? I think at some point, Mark, you can tell me whether or not you feel this application is ready to be accepted for.
I would say after this, I think you're you're at that point right now, Mr. Chairman. You can accept, recommend the board making a motion to accept the application.
I will do so. Waiting for a motion.
I make a motion to accept the application as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Tia?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I will accept this application. So it's unanimous. I see Mark looking through the multiples of paperwork that we've heard from the. I see Mark looking through the multiples of paperwork that we've heard from the fire department rescue. We've heard from Leo as far as the highway department.
Oh. Dean, you broke out.
You there, Dean?
Yes, it said, uh, just throw up a flag, which I've never seen before, that my internet connection is getting a little unstable. I wonder if it's the guy that pays the bill. Are they both satisfied, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, they've asked for both, had the both, the, they have both asked for a few stipulations be, um, be attached to the application that the board, um, is to approve it. And that's sort of outlined in there of what they are. The applicant has offered to provide space on, uh, the tower, um, at no charge. And that's reflected in, in some language that I'll read later. So that was an issue the fire department had requested. And the other, the other issues raised by the department just have to do with safety precautions and protocols and, and not box things, um, nothing significant. And, uh, Public Works or Road Agent just has a concern if they upgrade the utilities along the street, which they're not intending to, but if they were to put new poles in, that they be setback, uh, further from the travel way to make it easier for us plows. But based on their analysis of, of, uh, most recent analysis that they're not expecting to have to, uh, add new poles. Right Fran?
That's correct.
And all of those concerns were answered by Fran?
Yes.
In the paperwork.
Yes.
Dean, I have a, I have an issue with one of the requests I'd like to discuss.
Please go right ahead.
The fire department request that they have the site plowed and accessible, uh, maintained, sanded, et cetera, year round. They typically don't plow those towers out. They access them with snowmobiles or four wheelers with tracks. I think by having that road plowed and sanded and maintained, it's gonna create more people going out there up to no good and littering and possibly climbing or vandalizing, uh, opposed to that not being plowed whatsoever. They can access it as they need to for their service requirements. I just think it's a huge expense and also a liability to have that road plowed and open and having people out there. I mean, once the structure is built, there's really nothing that needs to happen other than they need to do their maintenance on it. Um, I think having that road open to vehicle traffic and people going out there looking at it is just opening a can of worms is my feeling.
I, I spoke to the fire chief about that. We don't, uh, we actually don't plow. And, and I think his point was if it's plowed, it's sanded and made available. We would only plow it in an extreme situation if we had to do some sort of, um, um, extraordinary maintenance or, or construction during the winter. If there's any kind of routine maintenance or someone needs to go out here, you're absolutely right. They just bring a snow vehicle and, and, um, you know, but for the most part, it's, it's unmanned and there's no activity. It's very passive. So there's really nothing that goes on in the winter time. And we try to avoid doing any kind of construction or maintenance in the winter, um, for that reason. And the, the fire chief seemed satisfied with that. He just said.
Yes, he did.
If you plow it, you make it accessible for public safety vehicles, which is what we would do anyways, because it would be also accessible for more significant, um, construction type vehicles. But on, on a routine basis, on a typical storm, we don't plow it and no one goes there.
So we have that documented, Mark.
Yeah, I, I followed up with the chief. Yeah, I, I spoke to the fire chief about that comment and he's fine. And Fran's correct that if they were to plow it, he'd like to see it sanded, but he realizes in most instances, um, it's not going to be done and, and he's fine with that.
Okay.
Mark, do we have the responses in writing?
They're all gonna be part of the, the, the stipulations that are listed here. They're, they're asking them if the board approves it, that they be part of the, the record, that the board incorporate them into the.
I understand, but e- even the responses, the chief, the fire chief's questions, do we have that stuff in writing?
We have his concerns in writing, yes.
No, but do we have the responses in writing?
Responses from whom?
Concerns that he made about having it plowed and sanded because it's.
Now, that's not in writing, but I can, I, if you, if you'd like, Tia, I can get it in writing. I, I spoke to him personally.
Even with the space ma- you know, making space available on the tower for the town of Henneker if ever needed, we need that in writing as well.
I, I actually got that, yeah, Fran.
It was my understanding that was going to be a condition, assuming the board votes to approve it, they would approve it with a condition. And with, and, and with the, the biggest one, uh, Ms. Hubri, I agree to agree is the space on the tower. And Mark and I had talked about very specific language that, uh, uh, that accommodates the fire chief's request. That, that would be a condition that, uh, if the board would approve it, we would certainly agree to.
Right. And, and I got that language from, uh, the applicant, Tia, on the, on the tower space.
Okay, I'm, I'm satisfied with.
Would there be, be a charge for that space as well on that tower?
No.
I'm, I'm satisfied with the conditions from the road agent. That makes total sense. And also the fire department by addressing the need for that to be plowed and maintained. The packet that we received clearly stated plowed and maintained. There was no exception to it. So I'd like that to just be, uh, spelled out so they're not told to maintain that.
We can qualify that when we get to that point, if we get to that point.
Any other concerns from any of the board members? Is it time for us to turn this over to the public, Mark?
Yes, we didn't close the public hearing and, and I see Alyssa Goss, um, has their hand raised. And we're gonna do this to one at a time. So if any, there are some other people on the call tonight. So, um, if you want to be, have anything to say, please raise your hand. There are a few people that don't have their full name listed or it's a phone number. So we'd like to know who those are. This one listed as a guest. We need a name attached to that. Um, we're very concerned about security. So, uh, I'll go with, uh, Alyssa first.
Mark, Mark, excuse me, could we also have, when they identify themselves, if they're in a butter or not?
Well, they, they should, um, once you get recognized, please just state your name and your address. And if you're in a butter or not. So, uh, Alyssa Goss is the first one. All right, Alyssa. Okay, Alyssa, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Hi, my name is Alyssa Goss. I live at 492 Liberty Hill Road, which is down the road, but not a direct a butter. And I just want, I tried to organize my concerns about the project into like a short list, so I could take up as little time as possible. I just like, I want to point out like the tower isn't like, they keep talking about like it's some really remote area, but it's not actually like I walk up there every day. It's like a 15 minute walk for me to get up there. And it's not like, first of all, like it's a, it's not flat. Nothing on Liberty Hill Road is flat. It's all very flat and very wet. I mean, it's all very steep and very wet. And the only reason that like, they're talking about putting a, uh, I believe it's a 12 foot road, like extending the road right up through the door yard past the, uh, historic farmhouse that was built by you from Goss before Henneker was even established. Like, I don't know how they would do it, like, except to put like a road, like, like literally like touching the building. And it's very steep and you can barely get a hay wagon through there, which I know from experience, I don't know how you're gonna get construction materials up through there. And the only reason it doesn't like wash out is because the rocks there kind of hold the trail that's there in place. Like, uh, the property is mostly maintained by Billy Goss and his hobby is taking rocks out and making things smooth. And if he could have taken the rocks out, made it smooth, he would have. But, uh, he hasn't because it can't be done without turning the place into like a mud pile and flooding out the road. And it's, the only thing that stops it from washing out is the trees in the wet areas are in there. They absorb the water. And I'm worried that like, they say like, oh, the trees are gonna like block the tower from view, but they also mentioned at the last meeting, trees would be blocking the signal. And I'm worried that if you remove trees, you're gonna be causing even more flooding. And, uh, it's kind of like, it's a very inaccessible area and that's kind of like why people like it. It's inaccessible to large vehicles. But every single day when I'm out there, I meet other people who are walking, going for running, going for runs, uh, lots of snowmobilers lately. It's right on the middle of the ATV trail that we had that big fight about, like I think two years ago. We had this big fight about the ATV trail and how it was absolutely essential to the Henneker economy. And this tower would go directly on top of it. And it's kind of like they picked the sort of the worst of all worlds with their placement here. They picked the really, uh, spot that's really hard to access with, uh, large equipment, but is really popular for people who are on smaller vehicles like bikes and on foot or hunting, a lot of hunters out there. People even come up from out of state to hunt up there. And I kind of feel like being overlooked like this tower, like they're not, they're not up, going up there to put a pro- tower up there to like provide cell service to the town for free. They're like, this is a money making venture for them. And it feels like all the money is kind of going to this company, not like a local company or anything. And all the like consequence for it is kind of be absorbed by the town and by the neighbors. Like if this causes flooding, like, that's like on us, I guess. And if they find out like in 10 years that whoopsie daisy, the FCC was wrong about how much radiation was safe for people and we have to take it out. That's kind of be, gonna be on the town. And all this maintenance on the road, that's gonna be on the town. And you do any like damage to that class four road, that's gonna be like a loss for the town, for the people who come up here to enjoy it. And I really think like, this is like, it's all the consequences on the town and all the profit is going out of the town. And I really just don't feel like it's fair to ask us to pick up the tab for somebody who doesn't like, the person who owns the property doesn't live on the hill and the contractors certainly aren't staying on the hill. Like you're asking us to pick up the tab for somebody else. And it's really not fair to the neighbors. And that's kind of my list of concerns beyond the fact that the balloon test was not, I'm not, I, I don't really feel like the balloon test was an adequate visual test. If you're telling yourself that a tower is the same as a four foot balloon, I don't know what to tell you. But I hope you'll consider like the public good when you, uh, make your, your vote about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Next one is, uh, Elizabeth Sweeney. That's you, unmute Elizabeth.
I think I am unmuted.
Great. Go right ahead. Despake your name and your address, please, for the record. You need to unmute yourself. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Okay. If you unmute yourself, just, uh, move your cursor away when you're done.
It says the host is not allowing participants to unmute themselves. Okay.
And, and, and I, I unmuted you four times. So you're all set. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right, fine. Uh, Elizabeth Sweeney, 779 Liberty Hill. Uh, first of all, I am in a butter. All right. I have several questions and or comments. I don't know if they're appropriate at this stage, but I'll try to list them and I really don't have them in order of priority. I repeat, I do not have them in order of priority. One of them is a minor issue. There was a failure to notify me appropriately for the prior meeting. You know, notification was sent out on New Year's Eve and was not received until after the January 13th meeting. I realize that's a mute issue because now that meeting was postponed. No. I, I, I don't know if it was postponed. I did not know about the meeting. Again, the notification was too late, uh, to get to my house and probably holidays and post office. I don't know. I think that's water under the bridge. Okay. Let me reiterate the issue that Alyssa brought up, which is that the house on the, uh, top of the hill is a, an historic house. And, um, one of the oldest houses in Henneker. And the, apparently the, the, um, the route to access and locate this tower is literally going through their property. That is one thing. The second thing, and I think, and I would reiterate with Alyssa, I'm unclear on what is the ben- the, I look at things in a core, uh, basically, um, cost versus, but, can you hear me? I'm not finished speaking.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I have a, I have a notice on my phone, done speaking.
Oh, no, no, keep, keep going. You're fine.
Okay. Uh, I, I try to look at things on a cost benefit, you know, basis. I don't know all the costs and I don't know all the benefits, but I will say one thing. It appears as if the benefit to the town of Henneker is minimal. And that the primary benefit is to one, the landholder and to Bradford, et cetera. And of course to the owner of the, um, the tower. So frankly, that is a big concern to me. I do not know what is the cost to the town. Is there, and I'm asking these questions and I would eventually like some answers. So, and I'm not keeping track. So is there a change in the tax status of this property? Will the tower be taxed? If there's road damage, damage to, uh, Liberty Hill Road itself, which is a big potential because this road, even today, this road is, has, is damaged because of the, um, the floor, the, the thaw, all right? So who pay, who pays for the road work that has to be done if there's any road damage? Is the, is, is this road capable of handling the construction that will take place? Again, I'm asking questions. I don't know if you folks will give me the answer. When is the construction to be done? Will we get notice of construction? I was told, am I still talking?
Yes.
Okay, fine. What time of year would the construction be done? And I think my last question is, what is done relative to public safety? This road, uh, while it's not dense in population, has children, dogs, uh, walkers, all kinds of people on the road. Again, it's not dense, but there are people here. What, are there public safety requirements that, uh, will be covered either during construction or afterwards? You discussed the issue of snowmobiles, um, in order to avoid year round plowing. All right, that apparently has been resolved. But if, I'm not too sure how that works. I literally don't know how that works. So, um, again, and, and never mind the electrical poles that you mentioned too with, oh, there's no new electrical poles necessary. So I'm just a little concerned about this road being the access point for something that I don't see. I don't see what the benefit is to the town of Henneker. The impact is minimal to the townspeople. And I understand, I am the only, I and one other person, uh, were the only abutters notified of this. But the whole project affects, affects all of the people on this road. They live here because they like living on this road. And I am concerned about what happens here through this process. What is the benefit to the town and what is the cost to me and to my neighbors? And, uh, why us? Why us when the benefit is to the town or the, the townspeople rather, and the travelers in Bradford? Why us when the benefit is to the town or the the townspeople rather, and the travelers in Bradford? I think, I think I have all my questions um, offered. I don't know what the next step is because I hope somebody wrote them down because I don't remember them.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else would like to speak? Please raise your hand. If you wish to uh, have any input.
I'd like to speak, Mike, just for a minute on um, Bob's letter, please.
Oh, go right ahead. Yeah, no one else has raised their hand, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, one of, no one else is raising their hand?
No, sir.
Um.
Oh, Alyssa has raised her hand again. Well, why don't you, why don't you speak um, to Bob Garrison's letter and then we can, you can recognize Alyssa again.
Okay. Uh, Bob Garrison from uh, up the Bradford Road fourteen oh nine. And uh, sent in another letter revised, the one that he had previously That we read at the January meeting. And uh, I think what I'll do with it is I'll read the first paragraph, which has the majority of His statement. And uh, a member of the planning board asked me about the FAA rules About putting up a hundred and fifty foot tower on Liberty Hill and what concerns there would be because the location is near integral airport. And which is located on Elm Street in Henneker. I told him the normal flight path of aircraft landing or taking off Would not be going near Liberty Hill. A normal flight path to the north of New Ha- um, NH eighty-six takes Long Paul, which is about, Liberty Hill. The communication tower at the top of Pat's Peak are much closer, a half a mile, and they are not a problem for aircraft Will take off or landing. It should be noted that the elevation in the top of Liberty Hill is about twelve hundred feet. The top of Pat's Peak is uh, the height of the radio towers would stick up from it. I haven't heard the airplane.
Dean, you're getting some real bad feedback.
I wonder what that's coming from. Basically, what Bob says is um, you know, that that he can see no problem From the FAA standpoint. That more or less covers it. And he also uh, supports the application. He also speaks of no waiting, correct? Basically, no. I mean, every airport has the majority Of the traffic runs. I don't know whether the internet connection is doing this. There's nothing to feed back in from.
You were fine earlier.
No, I think that. Well, there's a Try closing that one instead. Well, I don't have another mic that I know of, so. Let's open it.
Alright, alright.
Mark, you're doing it too.
Okay, Alyssa, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to point out that like, in regards to Garrison, Like I know he, part of the reason they want to put the tower over here is because he already objected to the tower going over by his house. And it's just like, nobody really wants a cell tower on top of their house. And I would think like a better place than putting it somewhere where you're going to uh, Have it nearest people's residences or damage a place that's already used for hiking Traveler after recreation. You should probably seek to put it closer to, I, what is it, two oh nine, one fourteen where they want the coverage? They might like seek a more industrial site where there's better For construction, like they, there's even like other, other patented properties that are closer to the road. Uh, I don't see the point of providing cell service to a bunch of trees. Yep, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Seems like everybody's starting to feed back in now.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. Uh, Elizabeth has raised her hand again, Dean.
Go ahead and have her speak.
Okay, Elizabeth, I, uh, there you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, I'm not too familiar with this uh, venue. Um, I I asked multiple questions and I hope somebody recorded them um, either by hand or uh, electronically. My question is, what are the answers to my questions and how will you respond to those?
Well, you haven't given us a chance to to get into it because we're, you know, the the uh, another butter had written a letter And then another butter raised her hand. So it's, we haven't forgotten and I wrote them down.
What I, so then how, I don't mean to interrupt, how do you, what is the process for you responding to my questions? Is it this evening?
We're gonna have a discussion right now.
I don't, I I, is that appropriate? I don't know. I don't want to interrupt.
Yes, we're gonna have it, we're gonna have a discussion right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, alright.
Yes.
Would anybody like to lead off that discussion? With what, you know, I think Bob's letter is quite clear. Uh, does anybody have any uh, comment on that? He brought up some very good points later on that uh, the radio tower. You know, that's on the top of Cranny Hill at Pat's Peak, you know, the cellular. Uh, there has never been any lights on the top of Pat's Peak and it's, it's of higher elevation. And uh, you know, where it's directly out of the flight path. To, I, I'd just like to comment, you know, on these people, Alyssa and and Elizabeth that have spoken As we always appreciate uh, any comment or anybody's point of view. In everything we do and we take it seriously, but that doesn't mean That it carries the weight which you wish. And uh, unfortunately, you know, um, I've stated before, I've been on this planning board. This is, I'm almost headed into my ninth year, that there isn't anybody that likes change less than I do. And uh, we've had a lot of things on Cranny Hill. We've had a lot of things. I've got neighbors. I don't I don't like them. Most of them, they're in my way. They're stuck on my road. Um, I'm sorry. And that, the change comes. But if everyone threw their stinking cell phones away and stopped calling me on the phone on eighty-nine Just long enough to cut out, we wouldn't need these towers either. Uh, we also have a responsibility to the landowner. Uh, the guy that's paying the taxes on this. We can eliminate, he can eliminate a tremendous amount of problems by, by closing the area off And put up no trespass signs for everybody. That's his priority, but he hasn't done it. He allows people to go in and out as they please. I, I think a lot of your concerns are change. And uh, you're not looking at the full picture. I don't believe that we can tell our neighbors what they can do and what they can't do with their land. Just because we happen to be using it, instead of saying, thank you for letting me walk up there daily. Um, if some One would like to address the constructions?
Yeah, let me just, let me um, just touch on some of these issues and I think Fran should talk about some of them. Um, but as far as the um, the notification, the certified mail notification to Mrs. Sweeney, Um, that unfortunately was, was an issue uh, for her. Um, we reached out to the post office and it turns out there was a uh, problem internally with one of the delivery people. And the postmaster is aware of it and he apologized to us, um, but it was not the town's fault. It was the post office's fault. Um, for whatever reason, the person who delivered the mail didn't follow up with a second try uh, to her home. So it um, it turned out okay because we ended up postponing the meeting and, and she was properly notified, but that's what happened there. There was some uh, Some failure on their part, post office's part. Um, as far as the benefits to the town, um, obviously this will be a taxed uh, asset. Um, the assessor will um, change the use of this property. I believe part of this is in current use. Uh, they'll pay a penalty that the owner will pay for that. Uh, the property uh, will be taxed. Um, and tax revenue will be coming into the community. Uh, that road is private, so any cost of um, Obviously of maintaining that is not, not the town's. Um, as far as damage to the road, that's something that, boy, we can certainly talk about. If you feel uh, it is a gravel road, so it's more prone to damage than other roads. If you feel that should, there should be some sort of security to protect the town's interest relative to that, uh, we can certainly uh, discuss that issue. Um, and then um, as far as the timing uh, of the construction, Uh, when it's gonna start, you know, things like that, I guess I defer to the applicant, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the attorney uh, would be best to describe the timing for this.
Fran? Yes, with respect to timing, the only thing I can say definitively is that it's um, it's about a six-week time period of construction. Um, unfortunately, once we get through the local process, we have a very extensive um, federal due diligence Um, process that we need to go through. The engineers need to go back out there and do some more engineering. Um, I, I'm, we're hoping to have it done in twenty twenty-one, but that's pretty much the best I can say as far as timing. Um, then um, ultimately, we would um, provide notice to town by pulling a building permit. So we would file for a building permit and that's when, when construction would start soon after that. Um, with respect to road maintenance, um, this is actually a unmanned facility. So there's actually, after construction, after that six weeks of construction activity, there's really no activity. It's actually less impactful than a single-family residence. Uh, and so, um, and um, but We would certainly be responsible for whatever road damage we did to any public roads. The, 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 the The, uh, the road, the driveway on the property is on private property. We're not, Um, we're actually utilizing an existing driveway for probably half of it and then extending it into the, into the forest. But that's all on private property. Uh, and the, the part closest to Liberty Hill Road already exists. So it's really gonna be no change in that regard. Um, but uh, if people were concerned about road, We would agree to condition that um, prior to construction, we walk Liberty Hill Road with the um, Um, the, the road agent or the uh, public works director, whoever you have in your town. Um, and then um, after construction, we'd walk it again. And if there was any damage, we don't generally cause any damage. But uh, to alleviate people's concerns, we would agree to just note it the before and note it after. And then once construction done, like I said, it's a, it's an unmanned facility. There's minimal traffic. There might be a pickup truck that goes up once a month. But certainly less than any of the other residential traffic that's already on the road. Um, you know, with respect to drainage, um, we're, we're, you know, We're utilizing an existing driveway for the first um, several, several, several hundred feet um, into the property. So there's really gonna be no change to that um, prior to getting much farther into the property. Um, you know, we're, we're building, we're, yeah, there's an existing access road here, exactly right. And then pretty much where the ninety-degree turns is where we're gonna be constructing uh, some new road. But as you can see, we're amply set back off the public right of way and abutting properties. Um, you know, there's really no increase in impervious surface. Um, you know, the, the foundations at the, at the cell site are quite small. Um, so there's really no impact on drainage or any kind of impact on the uh, uh, abutting properties or the public right of way. Uh, this is really a, a very benign um, uh, activity, um, you know, a- after the, after the construction is done. You know, with respect to the impact on neighbors, there's really none. There's no noise. There's no activity. There's no Um, any kind of, you know, things that are associated with commercials, smoke odors, you know, uh, anything like that. It's a, it's a very passive facility. And with respect to the public benefit, you know, Mark alluded to this. We're really trying to um, solve a, a coverage gap for that not northwest corner of Henneker Going up one fourteen into Bradford and um, and the surrounding areas up there. This is actually gonna provide a great benefit to people that are traveling on one fourteen, for people that live in the area. Um, and uh, you know, we feel like we picked a good site because it's set back so far from other abutting properties. Because it's set back so far from public rights away, because um, it really had minimal visibility. Given, given the height, that's quite unusual in this, in this instance. But you know, based on the topography and the tree canopy, it really has minimal visibility, you know. As uh, the chair noted, you know, there are already cell towers in Henneker And certainly in all the surrounding communities and throughout all of Southern New Hampshire. Uh, we've uh, um, we've built similar facilities in Antrim and Sutton. Um, we were just approved in New Ipswich. Uh, we're doing a lot of work in Northern New Hampshire as well. And and quite frankly, the, the need for better telecommunications is what's driving the need for this. People are using their phones exclusively. People are trying to work and educate from home. And uh, um, and you know, telecommunications is, is uh, a very necessary part of public safety As opposed to a detriment to public safety. Uh, we've got a very good record. You can talk to the folks in Antrim. Uh, if you'd like, uh, you know, we're good citizens and uh, Antrim actually had the same concern. We had to use a uh, a public road that was um, I would say less than in good shape. And uh, they, we walked it with the engineer uh, the uh, prior to construction, after construction, and he had no issues with us. So uh, uh, I think, you know, quite frankly, given anything else that it can occur up there, given such a large parcel, This is a very benign um, uh, activity.
Yeah, so uh, in regards to the road situation, it's great that he wants to walk wi- with the highway superintendent To get a, you know, to view it before and then after the construction, but uh, the highway department's up there frequently. Um, you know, regaining the road during the summertime, et cetera, depending on this construction and what kind of equipment it is. I don't, taxpayers should be the ones fronting this bill out of their operating budget. Uh, so there's, there's gotta be some kind of security that's down that we can utilize to Uh, the increased maintenance of this roadway as this tower is being constructed, constructed if it gets approved.
We could certainly um, uh, talk with the road agent and the town engineer to come up with a, with a bond Uh, at an appropriate level, obviously working with the applicant and his engineer To make sure that, you know, some sort of securities in place prior to construction to you. Um, that's a, that's a reasonable amount to protect the town's interests should, you know, some damage occur and we get into a, you know, Uh, disagreement on the uh, the, the who's at fault for it. Um, and that's uh, not a abnormal thing to do. Um, we require bonds for Construction all the time. Um, and and that's not an issue. As far as the road, the private road construction itself, that's something that I will be inspecting. Um, which is normal. Um, there's a pretty detailed erosion control plan uh, as part of this uh, engineering Uh, plan that's been submitted. And um, so regular inspections during that short six-week window will take place To make sure it's being done per the plan and, and proper erosion blankets are being put down, et cetera. Uh, but as far as the road, um, if that's a board concern, um, it's not a bad idea. I, I think um, uh, having a, some sort of maintenance bond in place to make sure it's protected than is, is pretty normal.
Yeah, and the, and the other thing that was brought up, um, and Alyssa, Alyssa made a good point on this. It, it was a gray day that day and I didn't know the color of the balloon that was supposed to be going up. But knowing that it was a black balloon, it might be in our best interest that we conduct another test. It shouldn't be that expensive or prohibitive. Um, but with, you know, on a clear day To see if there's any visibility that was not recognized the first time.
Um, two comments. One, the balloon was red. Uh, there's photographs of the balloon in the, in the package. Two, um, if you can tell me when it's not gonna be a uh, a gray day Two weeks in advance because we had to advertise it in the paper here. A gray day two weeks in advance because we had to advertise it in the paper at your request. You know, we actually find that the sky is gray more than it is blue. And so it was a very representative day. I think it was a very representative test. I was there. I did see the balloon from one fourteen, that photo location ten. It was a red balloon and. You know, it was advertised, it was noted, you know, the abutters were notified through the the public hearing process. You know, several folks, including myself, I know the planner was driving around, other members of the planning board, so people had an opportunity to see. And more importantly, not see the balloon. I I don't think another balloon on another day is going to change anything.
Well, I I I'm looking at the the Vertex balloon test package dated one twenty nine twenty one. And I am not seeing a picture of the balloon. Flying with package.
Usually they put a picture at the very last page. I'm not sure if they did. I I'm telling you, it was a four foot red balloon.
Mark, can you clarify or someone clarify for me a couple of things? I think as part of this original application, there were a couple of requests for some waivers. I'm sorry. Put my hand on that. Secondly, I've tried to study this zone. I know that there is. I believe in this zone that you're allowed up to three stories, but I also know that we have some. Zoning information or requirements for towers. Does a tower. Anywhere in town or is that part of the waiver?
It's it's a. Towers are allowed in in if almost all the zones by a conditions permit issued by the board. They're asking for two waivers. One has to do with tower height. Section one thirty three, one twenty five B two limits height to twenty feet above the adjoining tree canopy. Which is sixty five feet. The applicant is requesting a waiver to one fifty. Citing the fact that it's not being able to be seen. And then they are asking for a waiver of from section one thirty three, one twenty five, which states the tower must be camouflaged.
Can you read that first one again? It has to be sixty five feet?
It has the the rules state that. The tower height is limited to twenty feet above the adjoining canopy height. Which is sixty five feet. So the trees next to this property and next to the.
Okay. That would limit them to eighty five feet.
Right.
Stand without.
And 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 they're asking to go to.
One fifty from eighty five.
Yes. Let's go back to the plan.
From all of the vantage points.
Let me just go over this. This is the tower. This is the adjoining. Canopy. Okay, so obviously they're asking for a waiver above that. Twenty feet above this, the average tree canopy, which is sixty five feet.
I would like to see it camouflaged. I think it will blend into the hills behind it a lot better than just a galvanized monopole. Everything from town looking north. This tower is lower than all of the hills behind, so if they were to camouflage it with the. Fake pine tree branches, I think it would blend into those hillsides behind and it would be. Virtually unnoticed unless you're coming south on one fourteen by day pond by Bob Garrison's house.
I would agree with that, Scott, other than I'd rather it looked as a fire tower. We're very used to those everywhere in New Hampshire. I I, to me, I can spot the fake trees a million miles away and. You know, it just they they really don't hide it. They just make it look funky.
I I believe there's a fake tree in the next town. Is it Hoppington? Right up against Route two oh two.
Yep.
You can go look at that as a fake tree. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but I'm not sure that makes it look any more attractive. The other thing that you need to notice here is that. By trying to hide it, you actually make it more visible. If you add fake pine trees, you you actually and and I told you that platform is. Twelve feet wide, that that triangle at the top of the tower we see here. If you add fake pine trees, you're making it fifteen and twenty feet wide. If you make a fire tower, which we're not going to agree to, you're going to make it twenty and thirty feet wide. And and it's going to be far more visible than a a monopole. We we showed you photographs. And a photo visibility demonstration that shows that it's really not visible. We would maintain that it's camouflaged by location. And, you know. You know, just trying to make it look like something else makes it look like something else. And people have gotten used to the look of cell towers. You drive up and down all the highways. And and byways and secondary and tertiary roads and, yeah, you might have some visibility, but. It's not like we're trying to, you know, hide something anymore. We didn't camouflage. Any of the other commercial activities in town. We we endured them as commercial activities. We didn't hide any of the residential structures. We endured them as residential structures, so, you know, I I don't think. It would be necessary or appropriate to hide it here because it's just going to call more attention to it.
Mark, do you have anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Yeah, well, no one, no one knew, but Elizabeth has raised her hand again if you want to recognize her.
Well, let's recognize it and then we'll close the from the public and then we can discuss this as a board.
Same with Alyssa, so I'll unmute Elizabeth first. All right, yes, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good to go.
Actually, these are mostly concurrence. I think. Relative to road maintenance. I do think there needs to be some kind of escrow for maintenance of the road. Thank you, Tia, for also kind of bringing that up. Both during construction and, you know, maybe after, I don't know. Because because of drainage and maybe one year of. Of of snow and. And melt impact on the road if there's additional impact. So I either escrow, bond, whatever. You said thank you for a construction maybe in this this year. I assume you mean you means the summer of two thousand twenty one. And I think you said the construction only lasts about six weeks. What is the impact of during construction? Are there trucks going up and down this hill? I'm unclear. I just want point of clarification on that. Are there heavy vehicles? How is how is the? Literally, how is the tower brought up? To the hill? I mean, I'm not, I don't understand how it's done.
There's three components to that. One, we would bring in construction equipment to dig a foundation, excavators and backhoes and things like that. Then there'd be concrete trucks to actually. Generate the concrete for the foundation. The tower itself comes on the back of a flatbed truck and it's a. Even though the tower is one hundred and fifty feet tall, it's it's like a giant. Pole within a pole within a pole, so that, you know, the the it's like a normal flatbed truck. And then a crane would come up to stack the different components of it. It's it it's a, I I don't want to overstate it because it's it's really no different than. Digging the foundation for a house and the same equipment and then bringing in the concrete to bring a a house foundation. It's it's, you know, yes, we need to bring a crane up there, but. You know, that that's really it. It's 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 not nearly as impactful as any other kind of. Significant construction because it's really not that involved. It's a it's a very small footprint. It's a very small, you know, the 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 foundation is maybe twenty by twenty. And I can, I I say that generally because. Afterwards, we do a very extensive soils analysis to make sure and design the foundation very specific to the soils on site. Which we can't do until we get back out there into the woods. You know, I just think. You know, I'm I'm, you know, I'm I'm not going to fight you on bonds and things like that, but it's. I'm curious as to whether or not you require those for any other commercial activity in town or any other residential activity in town. Because the residential traffic that goes up and down Liberty Hill Road is going to be just as, if not more impactful than this once it's constructed.
After construction.
After construction.
But during construction, it could be substantial damage to the road, I would think.
And we've never had instance of that, but everything is theoretically possible. You're absolutely right. You could have substantial damage to a road, building a residential structure. You can have substantial damage to a road doing snow plowing. But, you know, we we don't anticipate it. We've never had instance of that and. It's no different than any other commercial activity elsewhere in town.
Okay, I understand and I'll I'll get off now, but I think the. There was quite a bit of discussion about two years ago about about ATVs coming up the road. And the disruption to the to the to the public and the noise level, etc. So during construction. There is, I just want to make a statement for the record. There is negative impact on the people on this road. During construction, there will be noise. There will be heavy trucks coming up and down and, yes. Apparently, we have to endure that, but I want you to recognize that there is impact here.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
You're welcome.
Mark, would you?
Yeah, just I have to unmute Alyssa. She's raised her hand again.
I did?
Hi. It as well, I don't think you're going to have much luck hitting flatbed trucks up through there. My question would be. Why build it up here and not somewhere closer to one fourteen? On a place that's already like used for industrial sites would already have presumably road access. And access for heavy equipment. Like you could build it over by Pennaker Crest Stone pretty easily, I would think.
All the elevation.
Yeah. But. I just wanted to, yeah, point out that the reason we have a planning board is because we really can't do any kind of instruction without having. An impact on the neighbors. And I do think it is fair to point that out. It's not where I would put a tower, but. I'll leave it up to the board and I would probably. Have concerns about any form of construction, even if it was like a wind turbine or something. I'm in favor of, I would still have questions. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alyssa.
Mark?
Yes.
Could could you explain to the public what the planning board's. Role is as far as the criteria that we have to work within. That we're working, you know, off of things that it's not personality driven. It's driven by the master plan and laws that we have to adhere to.
Sure. I mean, this this application is being reviewed under Article twenty five, the Wireless Communication Towers Ordinance. That the townspeople planning board initiated and and the voters voted. In and it dates back to nineteen ninety seven, so this is this ordinance has been on the books for quite some time. And it's been amended a number of locations. And in Henneker. This ordinance affects is an overlay district, which means it covers the entire community. And. Personal wireless service facility shall be permitted as a principal or an accessory structure. Use in all zoning districts within the town of Henneker. So it's it's someplace that's not, it's it's not an industrial use. It's a it's a use that's allowed everywhere. And I can tell you that that's that type of language is is the norm in most communities. Because it's really driven by the need for these towers is really driven by topography. Versus location along a highway where industry and commercial uses are. So that sort of is the overriding. Principle of the ordinance. There's a number of purpose statements. That go along with this, including, you know, reducing adverse impacts, maximizing co-location. So that, you know, it's just not a tower for one user, obviously. Trying to hide it as best possible. The ordinance does provide the ability for the planning board to waive any. Specific requirement in here. If the board feels that it's meeting the 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 purpose of the. Of the ordinance. Waiver specifically states that section one twenty nine. Where the planning board finds that a particular section of this article would serve no valid public purpose. Given the specific characteristics of the site and neighborhood in which the personal wireless wireless service facility is proposed. And would not be in conflict with the goals outlined in section one thirty three, one twenty six purpose. The board may approve a waiver to any specific section of this article.
Fran, I I trust your company shops local when they can.
We do quite a bit. Our our. We work with. New Hampshire and Maine based contractors that actually do the construction work and they sub out a lot of the local work, like the. Excavation and the road work and the the non-tower specific stuff, absolutely.
Any other, let's clarify, we, you say that the 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 tower itself, the structure can can fit on one truck?
No, 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 no. Tom Johnson is the civil engineer. He's also a construction manager. He can answer that. Can you unmute Tom?
Yeah, I gotta find him. There he is. Go ahead, Tom.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
So typically, a monopole structure like this one would come on two flatbed trucks. And they come with the poles in sections as as Fran kind of indicated. And then generally on a site like this with a with an access drive. It would be offloaded from a from a highway type flatbread, flatbed truck to more of a low bed. Like a equipment type trailer. And with that, they would haul it up the access road to the tower site. They'd have an altering crane there to to stack it from that trailer, so.
And and how many yards of concrete typically does it take for the base and in the anchoring structure?
Can't tell you yards off the top of my head. I can tell you. You know, Fran says twenty, I could say maybe closer to twenty five by twenty five by. Four foot, so. Whatever that gives us, you know.
Twenty five feet wide, you mean?
Yep, twenty five foot square. Probably three, three to four foot thick, and then that's buried in the ground another three to four.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mark, what do you? What do you feel about the completion of this? I see the wetland. Work was all done.
Yes, it's all been this wetland soils scientists have been out there. There's a stamp on the plan. There's a few areas. That they go near, but nothing significant. You know, there's a few drainage areas that they they're going to be putting in. To carry water from one side of the road to the other. You know, I I think at this point. It's really up to the board to have a discussion relative to. The waiver request.
Definitely.
And I I I think if you're satisfied with with. The public input, I would close the public meeting. The hearing, I should say.
And I think that's what I'll do. We will close at this time. We will close the public hearing. Fran, I got just one simple question. It might seem ignorant, but it really isn't is is in this height requirement. Is it totally necessary for you to go from? What our zoning regulation says, which is eighty five feet for this added one fifty? What is the necessity of of that much more height? Is it the actual construction?
No. Height is relative. And you got to imagine that. If you're not on a flat surface, if you're. Eighty feet above the terrain here, you might be below the terrain a mile away or half a mile away. So we we do very extensive geographic analysis for a much wider area than just the the property. And, you know, and we. And you know, and we, you know, we look at your height limitations. We look at the need for the facility. We look at where we're trying to cover the hills and the valleys.
Just totally lost you.
Port or and and so the 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 trees around us, while relevant, are really irrelevant. Because we're trying to cover a mile away, which may be higher terrain or lower terrain. So we, it's also interesting that you have a. Height limitation in a wooded area, but you don't have a height limitation in a cleared area. So if I were building this in downtown Hennecker, for example, the the height limitation doesn't apply, which doesn't quite make sense. Because you also want us to put it in a wooded area where. There's more vegetative buffer. In addition, the the vegetation is actually a impediment to the signal. So you got to get above the this, you can't have them buried in trees because the foliage itself, especially in dense foliage. And in very large vegetated areas where you're set back quite a bit from the highway and from all the other users. That 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 vegetation becomes a. A structural impediment to the to the signal. So, you know, we we generally look at things in the 140 to 180 range. Pretty much everywhere we go because of that area. You you I don't know how tall the tower is on top of Pat's Peak, but I'm betting it's. 125 or 140 feet tall and.
That's right on the horizon though.
What's that?
That's right on the horizon, you know.
You know, that that's a very different location because they built it at the top of the tallest peak in. You know, a multi-town area, so it's very visible. This is built on a peak that's surrounded by other peaks. And so. That that are taller. So, you know, it really does not have the visibility that Pat's Peak is going to have, nor is it designed to cover as wide a geographic area. Someone asked about why, why here? And it's really defined by the existing infrastructure. You have a tower coming on 202 on a in. Hopkinton, you have the tower at Pat's Peak, and then there's some towers in Bradford and Antrim and some of the towns to the west. That kind of define, and we had showed that in the graphics the last time, you know, we we are very limited in where we can go. Based on the existing infrastructure, most of Hennecker, including downtown Hennecker and this the areas closer to. Pat's Peak enjoy very good coverage, but because of the hill that this hill represents and a couple of the peaks just in between. Downtown and here, this is really the underserved area, the northwest corner of Hennecker, which is what we're trying to accomplish. We don't really have a lot of latitude to go farther down on 202 or in the industrial zone because there's already good coverage down there. And as we build out these networks more, our our targets become more defined. And our latitude of deviation becomes much more restrictive. And, you know, we 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 have to get above the trees. We have to get above the terrain in order to provide the signal. And 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 it's also, as as Mark pointed out. Your bylaw requires to build a co-locatable structure. So we look at the bottom antennas and we're designing this for four or five sets of antennas. We look at the bottom, they also have to provide the same quality of signal right there. As you see, there's four sets of antennas shown here. They are, the the bottom has to get above the terrain just as much as the top has to get above the terrain. And so in order to design a co-locatable structure, you've got to divide, design it with the height. To to provide that level of service.
So you're you're saying that 150 feet was a designed height?
Absolutely. We submitted affidavits and and engineering reports to say all that. It's it's kind of a compromise. Your zoning bylaw has 150 foot limit. Absent this tree canopy requirement that we need the waiver from. Usually our engineers like more height, but that tends to, and then the other issue that we have. As the butter that wrote the letters points out, as we build taller structures, they're more likely to be lit. And, you know, that's something that we don't mind lighting it, but people sometimes have objection. So we try to build something that's much more thoughtful. It satisfies the radio frequency engineers with height. It satisfies the the public with respect to limited visibility. It satisfies the FAA by being under the height limitations that require lighting in it. And and also is respectful of your bylaw regarding co-location. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a multifaceted look. If I ask this to radio frequency engineers, they want taller. If I want, if I ask the towns, they want shorter. If I ask the. You know, the the people that are in charge of lighting, they want, you know, there's a whole bunch of different criteria that go in. And this was very thoughtfully designed, given the location, given the existence of the existing infrastructure, including Pat's Peak. Given the the topography surrounding this and and the the 150 as as an affidavit that we submitted showed. Is really the minimum height necessary to provide the signal and provide co-location. And connect up with the adjacent sites in the area.
Thank you. Any other questions? From the board? Anything you'd like to add? What's your viewpoint on camouflage? Do we have Scott's opinion?
If I would maintain that it is adequately camouflaged by location. As the visibility demonstration showed, it really, you know, other than a small section of 114 going up north towards Bradford. I kept saying Hillsborough, but it's Bradford. That, you know, that it's minimally visible. And to do anything else, you know, I'm not a big fan of pine trees because nor am I a fan of artificial Christmas trees at Christmas time. It's just, you know, you're you're putting. Artificial branches on in on a utility structure to to make it go away and it just calls it more. There's several instances of. People that tried to make artificial pine trees and they become Charlie Brown Christmas trees over time. The needles start to fall off. As you add more antennas, you have to take branches off in order to affix the antennas. And, you know, the one in Hopkinton is a great example of how ugly they can become. With respect to to any other type of camouflage, you know, I've never built a fire tower. I don't know of any fire towers in that anyone has built in New Hampshire. That would be a cost prohibitive and a a far more bigger structure. You know, a fire tower has to be. You know, 16, 20 feet wide in order to have the functionality. It would be four-legged instead of one pole going up. It would just, I think you would. Draw more attention to it by making it bigger. We would not agree to that condition. And and so we're not proposing a fire tower. We believe that we satisfy the. Camouflage requirement based on the location and the lack of visibility and the substantial vegetative buffer. You know, we we set it back thousands. I'm not sure the exact number. It's 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 well off of Route 114. It's awful, well off of Liberty Hill Road. And which at at a significant expense to us to put it back farther into the woods, which gives it more vegetative buffer. This is in in our world, a very long access road. And I think by doing that, you guys get the benefit of the camouflage of the terrain and topography.
Any other opinions?
Is the power that is the power that's that's. Going to this tower, is it getting ran up there by poles or is it underground or? You said you weren't putting any additional poles in.
No, I think the road agent asked, will we putting in any additional poles on Liberty Hill Road? There's existing poles going all the way up to the house at the top of Liberty Hill. We will be extending the pole line on the private property with overhead and 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 poles. But that'll all be on private property. We're not doing any pole work on the public right away, which is what I think the the road agent and the public works.
Right.
I agree with that.
So we have two waivers to address, correct?
Correct.
I've still got one more dumb question on the camouflage. Fran, are you telling me that silver is the only thing that that tower can be?
Yeah, you know what? It's it's a non-reflective. It's it's kind of like the same material as a guardrail, which is done to be non-reflective and benign. You know, I've had situations where people have said painted brown like the trees, painted blue like the sky. And quite frankly. You know, it it calls more attention to it. And then it also becomes a maintenance issue as you, as you know, the paint starts to peel. This is a galvanized thing. It's baked into the steel so that doesn't, it doesn't fade or rust over time. It anytime you try to paint it something else, you just call more attention to it. And like I said, you know, statistically, the sky is gray more than the sky is blue. So to paint it one color and to to match a blue sky, you know, makes it look more visible on a gray background. So, you know, this is just a, you know, the the color that's evolved. Then I want to call it color. It's just the standard that's evolved. To be as least visually intrusive as possible.
Mark, anything more to comment about?
No, I think we're. I think we covered everything, Mr. Chairman. You know, the as as Fran pointed out, our maximum height limit is 150 feet. In general. But then obviously, depending on where it's being located, this specific requirements, as we've been talking about, so. So it does meet, if if this was going to be more than 150 feet, they'd have to go to ZBA because the the largest tower. Tallest tower we we permit under our ordinance is 150 feet. And that's what they they're asking for.
Now, if the board is satisfied, Scott, was that your hand waving or?
I'm gonna drink a water.
Okay. If the board is satisfied with the height explanation and why it needs to be 150 feet tall. I'm ready to take. A motion on that.
I thought we were going to go through both of the waivers first so that we have the whole picture.
I thought that's just what we did. One of the waivers is camo and the other one is height.
So the first waiver requested is from section 133, 125 B2. And that is the height limit and they are requesting a waiver to go from 85 feet to 150. That's the first waiver.
And the second one involves the camouflage?
Correct. I'll read you the paragraph, okay? This is in height limitations. To wooded areas. A personal wireless service facility located in a wooded area shall not project higher than 20 feet above the average height. Of the five tallest trees within 180 foot radius of the proposed tower. Further, a tower located in a wood area must be camouflaged to blend in with the natural character of such area. Appropriate camouflage for wooded areas include ranger or forest fire watchtower. Of a size typically found in the state of New Hampshire, artificial trees or other structures acceptable to the planning board.
Does that answer the question, Heidi?
Yeah, it does. I'm just always concerned with waving and changing what's on the books.
Well, I guess that's when you vote yes or no. And then we beat it up again from there. I don't know other, any other way to attack it. Again, we'd need a motion to either deny their waiver for height or to accept their waiver for height.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver from 85 to the 150 feet for the tower.
And do I? Ryan seconded?
Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, I'm digging for my checklist here. Tia?
No.
Heidi?
No.
Ryan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Okay, I needed a decision on the next waiver, which has to do with camouflage, which is the same section.
What are your wishes on camouflage? What's ideas on camouflage?
Excuse me.
I still like the pine tree look, but I understand Fran does this every day for a living and. If he's a man of his word and says that that galvanized pole will blend better than an artificial pine tree. I guess that that's his opinion. He mentioned. Cost that's irrelevant to me on looking at something every day.
Well, my opinion still stays the same. I mean, it. I I understand that it's a galvanized tower. I think on the cost factory, you know, factor for this tower company is the Crosley is the cheapest model out there. That's why they're pushing for it. And. I think that we owe the town. The backing that if they don't want to look at it, we'll try to do the most we can do to hide it. It's in our zoning that we have the decision to camouflage it. And no attempt is being made. And I do know, after being in the businesses that I've been in, that that tower could be anodized. Or it could be galvanized, any color that we wanted it to be. And. I I'm just, I don't want to look at a praying mantis. Across that that's shiny. I'm afraid it's gonna be to be shiny. I think it's. It wouldn't be visible from cranny, but I think it's gonna be visible from cranny. Where the balloon wasn't, the balloon fed fed into the the system because it wasn't that big. It was only four feet.
And you didn't see it when the sky was blue.
Right.
I would agree. We have plenty of blue sky days. No, seriously. I don't think that's a answer.
I would make a motion to accept a artificial Charlie Brown green. With a nail flash tower. Or if they can show the board something better, I'm certainly willing to look at it. But just a single galvanized pole is not going to be camouflaged very well. I would rather look at a bad effort of a bad pine tree than a silver bullet.
I'll second that. Tia?
I do not approve the waiver.
Heidi?
If we're asking.
Just to just for clarification, this is.
We're just approving the waiver if we're making them camouflage it, correct?
Yes, correct. So they're they're asking for a waiver, but there's a motion. Actually, you know what? There's a, there's a, we have to act on the waiver. So Scott and me.
And they're being asked to. The motion should be not to approve the waiver.
Correct. And then we can get into what type of camouflage you want. You're right, Tia. Thank you. So if you could withdraw your motion, Scott.
I will retract my motion.
Just so we have it correct and then we can get into the reasons why you want it, whatever you want.
I guess I'll make the motion that we not approve the waiver, the second waiver for the camouflage.
Scott, I'll second that.
Well, I'll give Scott. He was a little quicker. Second. Okay, go ahead.
Approving the waiver, it would be a yes, correct?
Yes, this is a motion to not approve the waiver for camouflage, correct?
Tia?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I would vote yes.
Right. Now the board needs to have, yes, we have to have a discussion on now that you want to camouflage, what do you want?
Well, I I think since the tower, it is going to be providing the wireless communication. Company, you know, additional revenue because of the. company, you know, additional revenue because of the coverage through that area. I I think that they can afford to cover it adequately. And make it look acceptable instead of going even for a Charlie Brown cell tower.
Should match the environment.
Scott, do you agree?
I agree. I want it camouflage somehow, and I don't know whether it's necessarily a artificial tree, but I'm sure Fran has some options for us that we can discuss.
Does Fran? I'm confused here about, are you asking my opinion? Because I'm confused here because you denied the height waiver, right?
No, they approved the height.
The waiver was approved. Oh, I'm sorry. I I actually thought it was tonight. I'm sorry.
Come on, Fran, up to speed.
I I I thought it was
It was close, Fran. It was three-two.
Okay, I'm, okay, I'm confused. If you're if you've approved the height waiver, then I'm gonna actually say that maybe, you know, rather than, and you're gonna deny the camouflage waiver, I don't think it would be appropriate to say, make it look like a tree or make it look like a fire tower before we could do some simulations to show what it's gonna look like or what it's not gonna look like. So I I mean, I can come up with some ideas. I have to talk.
Yeah, Fran, so if if you want to bring back your ideas to the board so we can approve them, because we should be able to look at those simulations and figure out what's best for our community.
I agree. I also, you know, I still maintain that nothing is necessary because if you can't see it, you know, if if you
And the board's already voted to deny the request for the waiver. Sorry, the board's already voted.
Are you voting on the site plan approval?
Well, we had to get through the waiver issue and and this camouflage issue and then see where 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 we're going next, Fran. So I guess if if you have some ideas on an artificial tree or as Scott said, something else you want to present to us, we can certainly, yeah, obviously, that's gonna take another meeting. We can certainly have a discussion about any other stipulations the boards would like to see, so you're aware of those, although we did go into them earlier tonight. But I don't know if the board's comfortable in approving the plan this evening with a stipulation that you come back to talk about what type of camouflage it's gonna be. I guess I'll defer to the chairman and others on that.
No, I think this is a hurdle that's got to go over. And it should be discussed now. And if Fran, if you have other tower side designs other than this monopole or another way that we don't take the beating and answer the questions of why we didn't camouflage it when we have in our zoning the ability to do so and people are seeing it and looking at it, please feel free to show them to us.
I'm confused as to what people are complaining about the visibility. It's good, good, and that's actually a facetious comment and a serious comment. Facetious meaning nobody's complained about the visibility. So and and serious in the fact that, you know, it might, you know, visibility is multifaceted. It might look like a tree from one direction. You know, there's really not a whole lot of of ways to camouflage these things. I've seen fake palm trees down in Florida near the airport when I fly to go visit my mother. I don't think a palm tree is appropriate here. I've definitely seen pine trees and I just, you know,
We have one in town?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have one in town and you guys like the looks of that?
Um, Scott has a comment.
Oh, Scott, you muted him. I gotta mute him. He muted himself. Hold on. Okay, Scott, unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. I think the fake pine tree is fitting for the area. We've approved the additional height for you, and I think we we reserve the right to camouflage it as a board, and it sounds like the board's wanting to camouflage it. So it sounds like the option is you provide us with some options for camouflage tonight or in other than meeting if you'd rather.
I have no other options other than a pine tree. So I would respectfully request that you approve the site plan approval with a condition that it makes it look like a pine tree, and then we can decide whether or not we agree to that or we litigate.
Mr. Chairman, the 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 applicant at this time seems a little hesitant to provide us with the camouflage. I think it would be best if he comes back within two weeks with the proposal so we can take a look at our options.
I agree with that.
I'm, see, the the reason I'm I'm confused here is I I gave you thirty photos showing that it's not visible. And we have one photo that it is visible. So I can make that photo look like a pine tree, but I can't, there's no other photos from the photo simulation that I can doctor to make it look like a pine tree because there was no visibility. I I, you know, we had someone from the board say he couldn't see it from his porch with binoculars. So how can I make that look like a pine tree? If he doesn't have a photograph? I I drove all over town. I took other photographs from three and five miles away, and I have no visibility to the balloon. Therefore, if I can't see the balloon, whether it looks like a monopole or a pine tree is irrelevant. I can't see it. I rode up the chairlift myself and tried to see the balloon from Pat's Peak. While I was staring at the cell tower at the top of Pat's Peak, I was turning over my shoulder and looking back to not see a balloon. So I don't know what I can produce for you that will show you what it's gonna look like when you can't see it already. That that that's been my point all along. There there's like, you know, one of the things that you gotta look at here is the waiver requirement. And and, you know, I'm not asking for a variance. I'm asking for a waiver.
Sir, we've already, we've already voted on the waivers.
Okay, but so what are you asking me to do here?
I think I think we've been quite clear. We, you know, we've just taken a vote about the camouflage and we've denied that waiver. The chairman, along with another fellow board member, has asked you if you have any proposals to to present to us this evening, which it's quite obvious that you do not. And so I recommended to the chairman that since there doesn't seem to be any proposals at this time, that we continue this conversation within two weeks.
My guess, Fran, is the pine tree is a fairly standard pine tree option that your company offers.
I will tell you, we have done them in the distant past. We haven't done one recently because people have stopped choosing them as a as a preferred alternative. I, we, I, I, I can't speak for Tom, but I have not been involved in a pine tree proposal in many years.
You mean what? They don't camouflage them? They only put the pole?
Yeah, and and that's the, unfortunately, I was at a hearing a a couple months ago where this came up. And one of the board members said, you can't put lipstick on a pig. And I took offense because they were calling my cell tower a pig, but the point was, was that, you know, when you try to make something look like something else, all you're doing is calling more attention to it. And, you know, there are similar poles already in the town of Henniker on the top of Pat's Peak. There are poles and towers all over middle New Hampshire and all over New Hampshire. You know, people have gotten used to these structures. You you don't try to hide a telephone pole or a high-tension power line. We we live with them as necessary you know, necessities of a of a of a modern technology. And a and and so just like trying to do something to make it look like something else was was thoughtful for a while, and then people got out of it because it's just I I I will, you know, we can, would the board be interested in painting it? I could paint it brown or I could paint it blue. That might be an option. I I don't know, you know, it's like I said, it, no one's gonna see it, so whether it's blue or brown doesn't matter. And and, you know, what?
This conversation continues to go on. Maybe the applicant should come back with a couple of proposals for us so we can take a look and evaluate each one to make sure it fits in with our community standard.
I think, I think that it, somebody make it into a motion and we'll go from there because I I think we're at an impasse. We're just gonna sit here and argue over it. And Fran, I know your opinion, you've stated it well. And it's your job, but it to me, there's a lot of difference between looking across the valley and looking something that's thirty feet, forty feet, silver, twelve feet wide, and compare that to a four-foot balloon.
I would like to make a motion that we table case twenty-twenty-one oh-one, the proposed site plan application for the construction of a hundred and fifty-foot monopole wireless communication tower for the applicant to come back to us within two weeks with proposed camouflage remedies to address the need or the requirement.
That would be March, that'll be March second, and and just for discussion, board, and and give the applicant some some guidance. One of the, the the last tree that we did maybe eight years ago, there was quite a bit of debate of, you know, these branches, you know, start at the top and come down. This is a hundred and fifty-foot pole, the existing canopy is here. I would concur that, you know, not a lot of this pole is visible. How much of this pole needs to be camouflaged? Do you want it from the the canopy? You know, the canopy edge, which is at sixty-five feet up or some other degree?
And and Mark
Just getting, just getting it, yeah.
The applicant can come up with those, you know, concepts and bring it back to us, and then the board can have a discussion at that point.
Well, I'm I'm bringing it up because unfortunately, at the la, at the the last applicant, that sort of detail got missed into the conversation. So I wanted to make sure everyone is on the same page that you want it from X to Y. And that, you know, when you make a decision, if it is gonna be a tree, that everyone leaves the meeting that's gonna be from here to somewhere.
Well, and wait, but Mark, we also have two other board members who are unable to be on this call this evening. So with their participation, things might change. So I think the applicant needs to come back with all the different possibilities for us.
I I I agree. I'm just bringing that up a point because it was an issue last time.
Well,
There's a motion, there's a motion in a second, Mr. Chairman.
Tia?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Dean, we'll vote that same way. See you in two weeks, Fran. Thank you.
I I just want to clarify, it's March ten?
Yes, at six-thirty. Yes, perfect.
Were there any other stipulations that we were putting on, such as the requirement to walk the road with the highway superintendent and check the condition prior to construction, or are we gonna take?
Well, we can take
That can all be tailored into the motion.
Yes.
Yeah, because right now I'm tabled.
Okay, got it.
I think, I think, Mark, could we talk with the road agent and ask him to come up with a bond amount that would be reasonable so we have that for our vote?
Absolutely. I'll reach out tomorrow.
Also, I think, you know, with, we've got to get everything with Jim and Leo in both respects in writing.
Yeah, I will, I'll reach out to the 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 Leo's comment is fine. I will reach out to the fire chief and have him clarify that access issue stipulation, have him rewrite the email, so we have it in writing so that my verbal conversations actually in writing to Tia's point earlier tonight.
Thank you.
On another shorty, and we can keep it short, is you saw the application for a another person to jump in on the planning board as an alternate. His name is Jim Islandberger. I had him a million years ago in in high school. We've got to make up our mind what we'd like to do, whether we'd like to talk to him first, but we will appoint him. Is Jim listening in on this, Mark?
I don't, not seeing him on on here.
Seeing him on.
Can we invite him to the March tenth meeting so we can
Absolutely.
Conversation and
I thought it was March second.
Oh, it's the second Tuesday.
It's the second Tuesday.
Okay, so March tenth, got it.
March tenth. Don't scare me, Heidi.
Sorry. I caught it, is that, sorry.
I will reach out to him tomorrow and invite him to that meeting if that's the board's consensus.
Would you do that, please?
Absolutely.
And we'd like to get him wound up here and get him on. On another note, something to just put underneath your bonnet and think about is Leo called me the other night and with basically trying to, is very frustrated right now because the snowbanks have gotten so hard that he has taken down mailboxes, not by hitting them, not by clobbering them with the wing. It's the, just the consistency of the snow this winter is really hydraulically taking them down. And in our constant search for things to change in the zoning to enhance it and simplify it and keep it moving, I think we ought to have something about any type we get a a cluster of these houses. It seems to be if we could work it into our zoning someplace, and I don't even know where we'd do that, but Mark and I can figure out where we could have a unified mailbox section.
Yeah, similar to what they have at the condos.
Yeah, yeah, and of course, of course, the post office is gonna go for it because the guy stands there and does one drop rather than drives forward a hundred times. But it it seems to me very logically to take as many mailboxes down as we possibly can and put them in a central location where they won't get clobbered. And you know, I'm not definitely looking at it from the finance department or anything else. It's just, boy, if you, after you've been out plowing sixteen, eighteen hours straight, I mean, you get a little numb. And there's a lot of irate people about their mailbox getting knocked down that I don't think we
But there's also, you know, knowing how tall some of the mailboxes that have come down were set at, they should actually be lifted a little bit higher so that when that snow does come off that wing, it's not hitting the mailbox, you know, right at the face of it. Maintenance of of the mailbox post. If if it's rotted out, of course, it's gonna come down.
And I know it's not
Shovel in front of their mailbox, too.
I know it's not convenience to hide your mailbox right up next to the telephone pole. So when he takes my mailbox out, he's gonna get his clock rung at the same time. But it it's just something to put in your bonnet. It realizes, I told Leo the other night, it will be a year before it hits the ballot if it needs to hit the ballot. But we we can get to working on it and figure out what section we can work it into so we can clean it up. And it just
That's, that's only going to address future cluster housing. It's not going to change anything that already is. And I think those mailboxes that got hit in the last storm and that were so sadly and negatively portrayed all over social media.
Right.
For the crew or no report to the town hall, not gonna address those. The fact, the life, seriously, it happens.
And I, you know, I I don't know if this has to be something that's done in zoning. The selectmen have full authority within the town right of way. You know, driveway permit, there's, there may be ability to take care of it, you know, with an amendment to the town code without having to wait a year. But we can look into what options are out there. I've seen it in a number of different places. Hollis has it in the subdivision regs.
I think there was one down on Hall Ave in the brand-new sidewalk, to be honest with you. I don't think that you're going to, by some zoning, eliminate a few mailboxes getting taken out when there's extreme I don't think that you're going to by some zoning eliminate a few mailboxes getting taken out when there's extreme snow. I don't think we should I'm in the middle of the street, but you're not gonna backtrack. How many new houses are we gonna get in the next year that you're gonna prevent another mailbox from getting wiped out?
Well, my point is, is if we can do something with, with future, you know, then we can plug into it and, and take a common sense role that, that, you know, we would just request that they come up with centrally located mailboxes and it makes everybody happy. Why not? I mean, we are a planning board. You know?
I just don't think it's gonna affect that huge a percentage of the town.
I don't, I don't think so either, but I mean, it apparently the snowbank up on Horseshoe Loop was just the right, you know, and we lost quite a few. And if they were down in one location, we wouldn't have lost any. It's, but when you get, you know, cluster housing that goes in and moves this slow, how long has that been going on? When you, when you're doing it one by one over a period of so many decades, you know, there's no unification into it. If it, if it had been written in that your mailbox would join these community mailboxes down at the intersection, the problem would be over, but it's not. If it was a trailer pack, they'd have a community box, but give it some thought and we'll either throw our hat in the ring with it or won't. You know, I'm not gonna fight over mailboxes. Anything else or comments that need to be made?
I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
I need that magic motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second it. And we won't even go through the list because the look on the smile on everybody's face, we're out of here. Thank you, Mark.
All right, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Take it easy.